All right, welcome. This is the January 23rd study session of Littleton City Council. We have the full council and it appears as though we have the full planning commission. We are doing a joint meeting with the planning commission to discuss the draft mineral station area framework plan. That's how we'll start our meeting off. Welcome to the planning commission. Glad to have you here. Johnson, are you going to lead the presentation?
Yes, I can. Do you want to introduce some newer planning commission folks or are we good to just go right into it?
I think let's go right into it and let's, when you have a question or you want to talk, give us your name and we'll just get going that way. We all have name plates. We've got a lot to talk about and we don't have any names.
So I'll get it started and, but honestly, it's really about your conversation, but I put a few slides together so we at least get some background and context to the discussion tonight. But yes, it's talking about the mineral station framework. And please note, we're calling it a framework. That's based on planning commission direction to not really call it a plan, but really focus around the concept of framework. Just quickly, here's a general overview of the study area. As you know, it's the mineral station RTD light rail is the center point, if you will, and then it goes out quarter mile to half mile from that area. Quickly, some background. So as we know, in 2013, the city did get a grant for master planning for both of our station, our light rail stations. We did decide to move forward with the mineral station first. So 2015, 2016, we hired the firm of Puma to help with that planning process and the community engagement happened in 2016. The main issues that came out of that, as we know, were parking and traffic. In early 2017, we learned that RTD needed to rewrite our contract for the station planning and we're still in process of getting updated from IGA on that. And then in December of 2017, we brought the topic to council and the direction was at that, this time is premature for master planning of mineral, but really directed staff to create a framework plan with goals and action steps based on that community and that it happened during 2016. And from there, January 8th, the planning commission had a study session about the draft plan and they had several comments and instructive ideas and feedbacks. So all of that has been incorporated into the draft that's before you this evening. So quickly, just to give you the context of the table of contents, planning commission did ask that we do an executive summary that's not written yet, but we're working on that. But the layout is an introduction, then really, as you all recall, we needed to have some information about the PEL, the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study that the city is initiating with regional partners in CDOT, because that's a big piece of this planning area. So there's a little chapter in the framework dedicated to that concept. And then chapter three, really talking about the existing conditions that we have out there and that's within that whole half mile radius of the study area. And then really, it was about four main topics that came out of the 2016 community engagement, transportation, recreation, open space, parks and trails, character and design, and land use. So those are what create the rest of the framework documents. And then we have some attachments to just for the context of the overall project itself. There was a market assessment that was complete in 2016 as well as in 2016, that community engagement. We had had a presentation to the planning commission in November, excuse me, summarizing all of the comments we received. So with that, I'm not sure how exactly you guys want to break this down. I kind of made this simple for the presentation piece. I lumped these three chapters together and then the next slides are just an individual slide on, like I said, the four topic areas. Transportation, parks, open space, character and design, and land use. So if you want to just talk about it now or how...
Johnson, could you back up just a little? Could you set a little bit of framework as to what your expectation is to come out of this meeting with? Are you looking for a direction? If so, what are the...
Sure, yeah. And I can finish with the presentation too, if you want to just finish that. So like I said, these are the first three chapters, really focusing around the context for the plan and how we want to use it. And really, the idea is to use it as we make future decisions in this area of the city. This is a document we want to be a reference and a guide to help direct some of those decision making. So that was the intention of the first three chapters. And then, like I said, then really, there's a section here about transportation where we laid out specific goals and action steps. So that, and again, it was really trying to create framework around the community engagement and putting it in a context that we can use this framework for moving forward and helping us making decisions for this area of the city. The second one, or I think it's the sixth chapter, is on recreation, open space, parks and trails. I guess backing up, as you know, from that community engagement, there was a lot of agreement about parking and traffic and the issues that we really need to figure out solutions for first, because that has an impact to both the light rail property itself as well as that whole area. So transportation, parking, and traffic were the big things. And then the other main agreement amongst that community engagement was the importance of the open space and, you know, the Carson Nature Center and the South Flat Park and the river in this area and that unique connection that the mineral station has to those recreational and open space amenities. And then a section on the character and design. And then lastly, some action steps around land use.
I have a question about the bridge. Is there a likelihood that it will be moved? It just barely touched on that. Is it actually possibly that we could in event move that sometime or...
Possibly, yes, based on, you know, like next steps, we have to figure out with the intersection and the improvements to the mineral and Santa Fe intersection potentially. That did come up. So that would be, there's some action steps and some direction in the document relative to if that needs to move, you know, sort of what the input was from my...
Is it something that could be moved or just brought down and then a new one?
We didn't get to that level of the conversation. It was just knowing that the bridge is there and with what may have to happen with the improvements to that intersection, it may impact that. Do you want to add anything more to that?
I would add my estimation, based on probably the work of the PEL, it's likely that bridge will move. So again, we haven't really gotten to the detail of what that truly means or how that might happen, but my guess, just based on what I've seen of the preliminary design work that the city did here some years ago, I think it's likely it will be moved. Which direction? That's a great question. I don't know. To the left.
I need to know where you're standing. Okay.
Down.
If I may, just backing up just a second, maybe to the mayor's question here, I think the intent of this evening here is for us to kind of share the outline or this framework and see if we have consensus among the council and planning commission in order for this to move forward here for a public meeting and then eventually come back through the formal process here from the planning commission and city council for adoption. Is that fair to say?
That is correct. If you get right to that.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
So, yes. So if we get the direction to move forward from this group, the next step would be to have an open house on this draft framework. Tentatively, we have that scheduled for the 15th as well as some online engagement. And then based on that, it'll either be two planning commission for a study session to go through what those comments were and figure out how to, you know, add that into the document itself. Or if it's, everyone's in agreement, you know, we may be able to just bring it forward right to the formal process, which would be to go to planning commission for a recommendation and city council decision making. But that's the... Or you?
You talked about, once this is formally adopted, the purpose of it is to guide decision making. So for it to guide decision making, does that mean we would adopt this as part of our comprehensive plan?
Adopt it as a, as a plan. I don't know that it honestly, I mean, it's in the context of the comprehensive plan, one of the, I believe, one of the plans we were supposed to take on was a light rail station master plan. This isn't functioning as a master plan. But whether, I guess that's maybe a question for the attorney, but whether it's connected to the comp plan or not, it would be an adopted plan that could be used.
And that's, I want to ensure that we can use it as a decision making, not just guidance. And it is enforceable.
Council, right now, would be an adopted plan. Now, one of the things that a number of cities in Colorado as well as other parts of the country do is they actually develop elements in their comprehensive plan that address specific points. And one of those elements would usually be a circulation element that would look at all the different forms of transportation. And this would then be incorporated as part of that circulation element as well. And so it will be an adopted plan and as we move into the comprehensive plan through the visioning process, that will certainly be a policy decision for the council to consider whether it wants to develop specific elements and then this would be incorporated in the circulation element in that plan.
Do you want to remind me? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to actually reinforce what the city attorney said. Based on my experience, the adoption of this plan would feed into ultimately the conversation about the element of a transportation master plan. So once you have a comprehensive plan, in essence, it's kind of a future land use map, you test that with a transportation master plan to make sure you have a network system that can actually manage that future land use map. And so an element like this then would be part of that process to establish a transportation master plan.
Mark, do you want to give a little bit of a summary of the planning board or the planning commission?
And happy birthday to Chair Renneke.
Happy birthday.
Good for me, not honking off my council representative.
Can you give us an overview of your conversations? That'd be great.
Well, just personally, it's, I think, I speak for the commission, glad to see this moving forward. We spent a lot of time on it back in 2016 and then it, of course, died over a year. And the fear was that we were losing momentum, we were losing, losing the input from the citizens that came to all the two meetings at Carson Nature Center and then the meeting in council chamber with the little clickers. So it's, it's good that that hasn't been lost. I think we agree that it is, this is not a, it's not a master plan, there's not a great amount of finite detailing here that can be used, you know, to, instead of a standard or guideline, it's very, very general here and done so on purpose. It's a framework plan. It's meant to give a little bit of oomph to what the, what our city wants when we're dealing with CDOT and their look see on the entire corridor from, what, Denver all the way to probably to Castle Rock along Santa Fe. So that's the purpose of it. And also the purpose, again, not to lose the community input and all our information that, that the planning commission and staff have put together. So we have looked at, I think, a couple of versions now of the draft here, made our comments, and I speak for myself, I'm happy with how it's, how it's coming along worded. Like to get your input. Personally, I wanted to be more finite, especially in my profession, design. I wanted to get into design more, more standards, but I was shooed away from doing that and I understand the reason behind it. So that's, I get a little bit of overview from the planning commission.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Yeah, I just have an observation. I'm not meaning to spoil sport, but I've been here since 68. And there were plans for a lot of things. We're going to have this project and it was going to have this outcome, et cetera. Repeatedly, things that we've planned for have turned out differently, morphed into something else. And so I'm trying to figure how much we should be trying to commit and how much we should maybe focus on what we hope will be transportation corridors and address those and then let, let happen, what happens with where the money the developers have want to take us or at least propose to take us. I'm just tossing that out there as something for somebody to back back at me with lots of wisdom.
My fear has always been, in the previous three or four or five years, we've been more of a reactive commission rather than a planning commission. I want to get ahead of the game personally. Our commission wants to do that as well. So when a developer comes in, he has guidelines, he has standards for what he could do on the Santa Fe corridor. It's that important to us, it's the most important piece of the whole puzzle of Littleton by far. I always say that Santa Fe corridor, the eventual corridor study that we need to do is number one, number two, number three on the hit parade. Everything else is five, six, and seven. As for the city, it's our best opportunity and our, and our most dangerous area for the future of the city. So I want to, I think our commission wants to get ahead of the game eventually. This is a start, when CDOT finishes their review of Santa Fe, immediately get into the corridor study, redo of the corridor study that Jerry and I were involved with, agreed, what, 15 years ago, something like that?
Ninety-eight.
Yeah, so get into that and redo, update the corridor study. So I don't want the developers, I mean, they have used my rights up and down the corridor, but I, I want the overview, guidance, guidelines, standards in place when this development's going to happen.
When does CDOT expect to have any information?
Couple of years. It's, it's going to be quite a delay. Is that correct? About two-year process or...
Yeah, it is. At least it's started, but...
Yes. Our public works director was here just a second ago, but yeah, it's, it's going to be probably a two-year process. In fact, Keith Reister, where's Keith here?
He just snuck out.
All right. Keith has been working pretty diligently the past month here with CDOT, trying to, you know, formalize the schedule, the commitment, but it is a, I think in this particular corridor, it is going to be a two-year process.
So, so Mark, clarify for me again, because it seems to me what, when you say standards, I'm not hearing that directly in this...
We don't have standards in here. We don't have standards here.
And so I don't object at all to the standards piece. I mean, that, a lot of that land out there has...
You were summoned. Did you hear, did you hear us calling?
No, you guys are recording, but my son called, so. How that works, all of you that are parents, so.
There was a question regarding the timeline with the CDOT study at this point, a couple of years?
Sure, I can answer that. Hopefully, in the next week. So the way we have it set up, Planning and Environmental Linkage Study, which is what we talked about shortly, we call PEL, which really looks at, the way I refer to it in sort of technical terms is in transportation planning, a lot of times you go through what's called a phase one environmental in the NIPA process. And so the PEL is kind of what I call a phase one light. And so it allows you to engage with the community, the stakeholders, and really identify a lot of the things that would take place in a, in a NIPA phase one, but it allows you to parse out the things that are really non-issues, where, you know, you already have the right of way and the capacity or whatever, you don't have environmental issues. So you can start to focus on designing and executing those. Normally, a full PEL takes anywhere from two to three years. The West Connect Study, which is just finishing, related to 470, and that area has taken 36 months from start to finish. We're releasing a RFP, RFQ, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, which is what is sort of a preliminary step to the PEL, which is to bring holder, bring together all the stakeholders along the corridor between 470 and 25 to agree that we need to do this and really try and wrestle CDOT to a pin to convince them it's really important and to fund it, because they have to lead and primarily fund it. So we're in discussions with them about how to execute that going forward. So our hope is to have that preliminary work started by, hopefully, the summer. And then it should take probably about six months during that process, six to eight is my guess. And hopefully, by the end of that, we'll have CDOT committed to a more...
Excellent, thank you. I think the fact that we've got it started is huge. It's one of those things we talk about, talk about, talk about, but it, somebody needed to pull the trigger, so that's been pulled. I would agree with Mark about the importance of this. And I think one of the things that Littleton has to get in front of is developers, because if we do not, if we are not clear about what we want in our community, they will build what they can. And they're completely within their rights to do that. We have some, a number of places along Santa Fe that are huge and important parts of our community and parts of future development and their risk. I think that the mineral area, this is, I think it's very timely in so much as that is an area that is about ready to undergo change. It will go change, it will undergo change in terms of transportation, it will undergo change in terms of redevelopment and development, both at Aspen Grove and at the Enser property. It will undergo change in terms of the light rail, because at some point, probably not in any of our lifetimes unless we work on a public-private partnership, the light rail will extend and that will change what that station looks like and how that station operates. So there's very little in that area that is not destined for substantial change. And it is our community, it's our city, it's, it's up to us to make sure that we have a very clear direction for people, developers, et cetera, as to what we want to see happen there. And this is a great start. And I think the framework, it's kind of, I haven't worked with the framework yet in the context of planning, but I like this. It's kind of like a baby step. It's kind of the light. And I think that taking it to the community at this stage with, in its current, as long as it's very well explained, that this is not final, this is not coming out of the ground tomorrow, that I think it will be really interesting to see the response that we get back and the, and the input. And I also think it's an opportunity for us to also test the waters on what we're doing with the PEL and some of the issues that we're dealing with along Santa Fe. And let's face it, Santa Fe is going to be a very different transportation link than today, in five years than it was today. String Ranch is popping out of the ground and that is going to have a massive, massive impact on that, on that throughway. Right now, it's, it's not a fun street to be on and the safety issues there are becoming larger and larger based on stuff like that. So as, it's our responsibility, it's one of our top safety and infrastructure, it's our top key core responsibilities. So that's, I think that, you know, we love to hear from others as to if they think this is, you know, ready to go to the public, are we looking for anything other than just a blessing on this and we're good? Are we all good? Are you here in like 50 or 20 minutes?
I have questions.
Oh, dear. Ask away.
Forgot me. Santa Fe, while it's unique in one regard, as it points out, has the river over here, houses over there and blah, 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 it's, it's not completely unique. So what other areas in the state have a similar type of an issue, but they don't have the problems that we're having? I mean, we have 50,000 vehicles Monday through Friday on Santa Fe, 25 on the mineral. What's another area that is similar?
You know, personally, we haven't really looked into that from the standpoint of the planning commission. We've really just been focused on how to create the framework that we want to help with future decision making, but certainly that can be a component that we research and have a conversation around and just maybe learn some best practices, maybe from other places that have a similar situation. places that have a similar situation.
I think it'd be worth, you know, finding out, you know, where's there a problem, I mean, where's there a similar situation that doesn't have the same problems that we're having? Another one is on the multi-modular connective mixed-use stuff. I've been dying to say multi-modular all day, by the way.
That's not true, Jerry.
But we're looking at putting together autos, bicycles, pedestrians, and there's safety concerns there. I mean, it's, if you have, you know, cars and then bikes, there's a true safety issue for everybody there. And then if you put bikes and people together, there's issues for, again, bicyclists and the pedestrians. So I, well, it's a feel-good thing to me to talk about, oh, yeah, good, let's have this nice walkways and bicycles and autos. For safety reasons, I think we got some real issues there unless we have separate something fenced off areas just for bicycle. I know South Suburban is always dealing with it, just down there in Mary, Carter Trail. Let's keep that in mind somehow. Also, there was, I think it was on page 29, it talks about the different opinions. Tell me a little bit more about that, just a little bit. It was like the third bullet in chapter seven, area, land use.
So it was the community input that land use?
Yeah, yeah. Tell me something a little bit more about it.
The summary of the community input.
Well, I think you've gone through the community, but all those points were there. I mean, you have people that said, build a five-story building, people that said, don't build anything, anything.
That's what I want to hear. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't...
No, but I've just read through all those points.
I want to elaborate a little bit, that's what I'm looking for.
Right, yes. During that entire process, which was two meetings and two open houses, we received, and then there was a bunch of online engagement as well. So in November 2016, we did a compilation of all the feedback we received and presented that to the planning commission. So within that, that's this document, there were a variety of topics that were brought forward. So on chapter seven in that land use, those bullets on that, the first bullets, it's an overview of what, so generally, traffic and parking, everyone agreed that those were issues. So that was an agreement. Everyone also agreed that all the recreational and open space are really key community assets that we wanted to enhance, to keep in that area.
But when it talks about the differences of opinions and the vast...
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So outside of those three things, opinions were vast and varied greatly to the point of input. Some people said, we want nothing at all out there. Some people said, all we want on a mineral station is a parking structure. It ranged from, oh, I'm fine with high story or high-rise apartments, I'd like to have more TOD-looking transit-oriented development on the property. So there were opinions all over the place. That's what this is.
From nice quiet park to huge apartment buildings, that kind of stuff.
The graphs were all over the place when you look at them.
The building heights and residential densities, what were appropriate uses, how to manage the pedestrian connections, access to Aspen Grove, the trail, the design, the preservation of the area, maintaining privacy. I mean, the comments were wide.
And I think you pointed that out, is that while you may walk, a citizen may walk in with a solution, you realize, or they realize that there's 100 people there and there's 100 different opinions on what they want, things. So this is going to be a tough one. Good reports, by the way, I did really appreciate them. And the last one too, in chapters seven, page three, where it talks about the value captured scenario. Are we talking about incentives, some there? I know in one of the other chapters, it talks a little differently, not talking incentives, but what is it talking about in this case? Is it talking government incentives?
Yeah, you know, it's not intended to be a specific, it's intended to be a broader element and really stepping back. So in the market assessment, that's where the, it's open at the time, they did a study about, you know, what's the market-driven likely potential for the future of this area? And then, oh, if you want to take a different approach and really focus around, you know, starting with what the community also wants to see and support it that way, there's value capture. So value doesn't have to be money per se, but more what is the community value as well? So there's many levels of the idea behind the value capture, but it's looking at all of those possibilities. It doesn't preclude financial, but it doesn't bind us to that.
Jerry, one of the things that was included in that, it was about positioning that area. So the value was defined as, there's a light rail station, there's a river that runs through it, there's access to the trail, it's a huge transportation corridor. So giving, essentially saying, these are unique assets that you're only finding here nowhere else potentially in the region. So this has greater value than just this 10-acre plot of land or any other, you know, plot of land. So that was what some of that value driven...
Thank you.
I'd say, I think this area of Littleton is so valuable, not from a monetary aspect, but just in terms of our city and our citizens, that we need to have something like this to start the conversation moving forward from this point. Like Mark said, it's just a framework. It's pretty much, seems to me, be the first rung on a ladder that is many rungs high. And I think we need that to start being proactive and not waiting for developers to come and say, hey, we want to do this. And then the community council is kind of scrambling to say, well, is this fit with what we want? If we don't have something laid out of a general idea, and this, like you said, there's no standards or well-defined guidelines in here, I think it's probably a good thing for this first step. When we get to more specific details, specifically with Santa Fe and CDOT, that can drive us. I think the important things in this document are the goals and action steps in each of the chapters. And you see that we have those broad goals and then, I won't say detailed action steps, but things to say, hey, these need to drive our future considerations. When we're looking at whatever happens on the Enser project, say, do the sidewalks, do the streets fit with this? Are they, do they fit with this plan? And I think as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, that's where more specific standards and guidelines will come about as we get more tangible interactions with developers and our partners.
This is a, use the expression, baby step. It is the first baby step to eventually a larger transit station study, master study. But it's a baby step in deciding, what is the transit-oriented development that Littleton wants? Not some type of template that's developed by a consultant that we hire, it's a standard that can be done at I-25 or up in Arvada or anywhere else. It's our, what do we want? What kind of density do you want? So that's the importance of this first baby step.
Great. I have a series of comments and maybe some questions. What I really like about this is that you've brought, you finally have brought in all the various plans that were out there from the South Platte to the Santa Fe, et cetera. And it was actually well-documented and summarized here so that I could read through it and kind of get those salient points. So I really appreciate that. The one thing that I would like you to look at or comment on, if you already have, as you brought in those plans and you're looking at this framework, was there anything that potentially could be in conflict? Or the other impression that I got is, we're asking for a lot. And can you really do all of that? Is that even possible? You know, we kind of want the kitchen sink and everything else in there. So my caution there is, let's ensure that there isn't conflict, because when we put this into practice and are needing to make a decision, we don't want another complementing plan, maybe directing one way versus another one another way. So I don't know how we would resolve that conflict. And then, you know, the other question are, are we asking for everything? And I think we have to recognize, we probably can't get everything. So just a question that I'm throwing out there. To that, so if you want to come back and answer that, please hold your answer. It would be great to see a, almost like a test scenario. Like, if we say we're going to use this for decision-making, if we put out a scenario out there, how can we, I'm still not seeing how I use this to make a decision. So I would love to see that, and, you know, maybe that's something that's just a follow-up. And then the final thing is regarding the community input that you're seeking here in a couple of weeks. I think the area, because there's a lot here for a citizen to take in. And I think the areas that we're looking for community input is in the goals and the actions, correct? So is that where the focus is going to be, or are these the right actions you expect? And then here, land use is the one that is, the one people are going to have a lot of opinions, and we have to try to narrow some of that. But as I look at the land use section, these are words, it's planning jargon. And, you know, I look at and say, best practices in land use. And sure, there's best practices in land use. What are best practices in land use? So if that's where we're asking citizens to comment on, I don't know that, you know, we have presented it in a way that they even, you know, that one could even understand. Sure, that sounds great, but what does that mean? So again, I know the intent was for this to stay high-level and vague, but then I struggle with, how do we put this into practice? And maybe it's step two, but those are my three areas of concern.
But we did talk about, we talked about housing, but we didn't say what density. We talked about additional parking, but what does that mean? We didn't say outright, let's build a eight-story parking garage jammed up against the park. We didn't do any of that. We didn't call out the road system, none of that. This is a framework plan, not a, a framework, it's not a master plan. So I think the delicate balance is, how deep do we go before it turns into a plan rather than a framework? So a framework we can do in three or four-month process. A master plan, fully done, that's it. You're losing speed, year and a half to two-year process. So...
So I understand what you're saying, Mark, but when we talk about, there's some things like parking, people understand what parking is. Land use is just one that is a little bit more broader, means a lot of things. Solving for parking, you know, there was one comment that I loved in here where it talked about ensuring that parking is done in collaboration with other partners and that the different property owners are working. So that was very common sense and makes sense and logical to anyone that reads it. Again, land use is just a little bit of a higher level vocabulary, that if you're in that world, you get it, you understand mixed use, not to minimize, you know, our citizens and their engagement in this, but I just, I don't know that we're going to get valuable in that section. And I think it's an important section to get valuable and well.
City manager has something you'd like to add?
I'd like to try to answer the question about how this will use. You know, based on my experience, in the sequencing of projects that we've got, I believe how this will play out is, the planning commission and the city council adopt this framework or master plan. But honestly, I don't know if it'll matter here, here the rest of what I have to say. But if you adopt that, then the next step will be two projects running in parallel. One will be the PEL, and then the next one is going to be, depending on council direction of retreat, is going to be the Vision-to-Cop Plan process. And so as CDOT moves through the PEL, you're going to be asking them to evaluate this, that entire corridor with this in mind. So you're going to be specifically asking the consultant, CDOT, to evaluate the project in relation to this adopted master plan. So you'll see specific policy decisions that'll have to come out of the PEL, and eventually the council will have to adopt that PEL. So you'll see there'll be an opportunity between the PEL and this adopted plan. If you adopt the PEL, you're going to be superseding, but honestly, to some extent, this framework. Then, in sequencing and timing, you're going to have the Vision-to-Cop Plan. So the COP Plan then is going to take not only this adopted plan, but it's also going to take the PEL into consideration. And then once again, the council's going to eventually have to reconcile those, those policy decisions and formally adopt the COP Plan with an element of a transportation master plan. It's that element of the transportation master plan that incorporates this and the PEL. So over time, you're going to be superseding this, is my guess, as you move through those two separate processes.
Yeah, I think... Chris? I was going to, more or less, make an observation pretty similar. I mean, Mark's was way more comprehensive, but essentially, land use is sort of the last one in here, because I think collectively, we, there are land use decisions that need to be named, a set of parcels. But until we understand what's going on with the PEL, until we understand what's going on with Enser, Mark mentioned, both Enser and I guess the Pell are supposed to, are essentially, you know, the gorillas in the room anyway, that really acknowledging land use as a component of this is important for where we are in the framework. But there wasn't a lot we could do in terms of saying specifically, other than, God, as Mark said, all this input from the community that had been gathered over various other projects that should be part of the discussion. We couldn't go a lot deeper with this, because these several other really large attributes of any project are sort of pending, and until we know what's going on with them, we can't reconcile it yet.
There are...
I was going to say, yeah, it sounds like this is not necessarily the decision-making document, you know, you're not going to refer to this, this is what we do per this document. But this drives the conversation forward with CDOT and to say, hey, you know, we're going to be building off of this into the future, and that's where the more detailed, more direct, more direction will come from.
Back to where I think Jerry was. Yeah, you're right there. I will expand on that. It seems like there is inherent conflict between the TOD element that keeps appearing, transit-oriented development. And it seems to me that development is a heavy word in that, meaning, I think, by definition, high density. And then what we heard from the citizens, that they were concerned about the consequences of a little bit of density, meaning traffic, not necessarily high-density traffic and parking, and the concern about nature and the river. And they were trying to put both of them into one plan, right up against each other, and it's kind of looking to be like river by density, and we think those are somehow going to mesh together into Littleton small-town charm. Can we modify, tweak transit-oriented development so that it has a Littleton flavor and isn't necessarily multi-story packed in tight up against our river? Is that...
We can define what our transit-oriented development is.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be...
As I said before, we don't have to...
Did you say that already?
Stand by the template, yes. We don't have to stand by the template. We can say what we would like.
Okay.
Nothing wrong with that. We will do so.
Could we have from you folks an idea of what that might mean? Yes.
Got a lot of citizen input, what, 108 pages of comments?
Sure, but I mean from the planning commission.
Eventually, yes. The reason why this project got put on hold after 2016 was, obviously was not enough information. There was the great unknown of what's going on with the Santa Fe corridor. Is there going to be an overpass at Mineral? Is Santa Fe going to be turned into a, you know, ten-lane expressway right through the western part of our city, right next to Dan, I don't know. What are they going to come up with during the Pell study?
Sure.
Put us on hold. So once we get more information, then we can continue and complete the master plan study of that station and the surrounding area, get involved with, continuing on with the comprehensive plan, which includes a corridor, a reexamine of the corridor study.
I would like to continue. Thank you. That, maybe before this is presented to, taken to the citizens, February 15th or so, is that right? that, is that right? Do I understand that that's the process?
Correct.
It's an outcome from tonight.
Sure, 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 sure. But as a possible next step, that, that might help the citizens digest this if there was some idea given to them about what transit-oriented development, Littleton-style, might be. Because we know they went through that last iteration with the buttons. We're going, they got to choose between various styles. By our standards, not by Hong Kong standards, but by Littleton's standards. And, and so to give them some flavor, like, I don't know what that might be, a Littleton flavor transit-oriented development, but I would be truly excited to find out what that might be, even, even though we don't know what intersection is going to ultimately be.
Got some pretty clear hints, intermixed with all the place, with the community comment. For me, I gather three things. You know, there was the Republican statement, you know, it's economy stupid. Well, if I look at the, all the citizens' input, it's the parking stupid, the traffic stupid, and the park is stupid. Those are the three, three items that, that everybody zeros in on.
You take the stupid out of that, the same thing Jocelyn said.
She's more eloquent.
Which I think this is, you almost described this document, that this is the start of that defining what this transit-oriented development is in Littleton.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what this is.
But it hasn't done it yet. Not clearly enough for me as a citizen.
Yeah, I don't think it is the, you know, end-all, be-all of that. And so, yeah.
I'm just suggesting that the citizens probably could use some help in assurance of what that might be to translate between really big and really flat.
That was my point on land use, because that's where it would come out, is on the land use. And it's, it's not at that level of detail, so I don't know that we would, I don't know that we would get that feedback. Or maybe it depends on how you would be presenting, or looking for this community input to happen. You know, to use an example, it says, action step A, future decision-making needs to ensure best practices in land use are considered when development and redevelopment. Yes, absolutely. But it doesn't tell me what that is.
As a citizen, I would have, well, even as a council member, I don't know what that means. I'm true professionist.
Right. So it's, I'm just, as you lay this out, I don't, I don't know how you are going to get, what kind of community input you're going to get, and a citizen input you're looking to get. Are you looking to get a yes or no on each of these action steps? Or are you looking for, tell me what best practices in land use are? Maybe that'll help give us the clarity of what that community meeting would be.
There was a toss-up question in the beginning about what do you want from council. If I could speak for Jocelyn and you, and the rest of the commission, I'd say, what I'd like to see from the council is your comments on this. This isn't done as a draft. Comments on page by page, where we can take it up again.
I got them all.
Meeting adjourned.
Go on up.
And Robin, and then Peggy.
This is kind of tailgating a little bit on what Carol and Prina and Mark were saying, but, and we see this throughout, and I think also what Mark was saying, we're talking about, when we talk about a river, we don't really have a lot of direction. So here we're talking maybe about Mineral Station, but I'm thinking, even going on that at some point, obviously not on this framework, but, you know, when we look through any of the plans we have, it tells us about a river, we want to protect it, enhance it, preserve it, buffer it, have a proper balance, celebrate it, experience it, respect it, be compatible, improve it, right? What does that mean? Because, you know, to me, as a planning commissioner, I have no idea where I need to take that direction. So maybe in the process, coming from, not in this framework, obviously, but as we're working towards the comprehensive plan and our vision, what is our vision for the river? What do those words actually mean to us as a community? You know, we have a downtown standards and guidelines, it's 362 pages, and it describes what we want in our downtown. I think this kind of shows us that we need to do the same thing for a river, not just Santa Fe, but the river going up and down through the city, since it's such a huge, important item to us.
We actually do have something close to that, which is the surette that the South Platforming Group did, which designates the uses and stuff along the river. So that, that could be a good start. Peggy?
I'm sorry what my brain's going to try to say here. I would point out that this is minor first, just minor, but in the stationary, the station area framework in the last page, there are two step Bs. I assume one should be a C rather than a B. When I was looking at that, that's when I, I mean, just looking at it for another reason, I noticed the two action steps B. But one of them is talking about maintaining the views to the Riverport Park and Mountain Vistas to the west. And so my, my, what came to my mind is views for whom, from where? From here? Well, we can't see it from here. From the top of Jackass Hill? Well, they could see it. From the bottom of Jackass Hill, they can't see it. But across the other side of Santa Fe? I mean, where are we talking about maintaining views? And, I mean, I know that probably sounds stupid, but it is an important thing to grasp. I like, I like our trying to do this, to see what we can do. But are we also, are we talking about people who are there, going up to Denver, coming here, going over to the Littleton Hospital and the medical center associated with that? Who's going where, from where, with what intent? Because part of it makes it sound like everybody's going to go work downtown Denver. And that isn't going to happen. And some of those people are retired, and I assume they want to stay there until somebody runs over them because they want to buy their house. I'm teasing, but, but, you know, people are living longer, and when the families come to visit, because I talked in this one thing I'm looking at, about the average size houses and the number of children and whatever, because people are older, but people come to visit. So needing more than two bedrooms is quite likely if you had, because some people use a bedroom for study and a really bedroom to actually sleep in. But then when visitors come, so I'm not sure that the market is necessarily going to be what this says it's going to be. All that jumble, just to say that. Anyway.
Carol? I think Peggy brought up a very important thing in passing. A Littleton hospital and that whole area, medical development, that might be a destination in transit-oriented development. I'm not sure how far that definition goes. But if, once you get to, on light rail, to Littleton Mineral Station, then what can you do? Right now, you can't do much.
It's going to change very rapidly. Enser and the Light Rail Station are joined at the hip.
I mean, about like getting to Littleton Hospital.
Well, you talk about that being a notable point, and then you talk about what's going on at Santa Fe and Mineral.
I'm just thinking of, I'm not thinking about Enser-type things, but just how do, if this, if transit is an important part of transit-oriented development, if it goes beyond development, then we probably need to consider, how do you get from Littleton Station, like Peggy was saying, to somewhere else? Because right now, you can get to Littleton Station.
And so Carol, the first conclusion, because I know, I thought that through, and there's actually a section here that talks about not just the light rail and what happens at the mineral station, but that there's also bus transit there. If we come to the conclusion that this is a transportation hub, let's give it that, that title.
Exactly.
Then that changes the conversation. A transportation hub behaves, looks different than, you know, an office, you know, an economic development driver from an offices and a center of commercial, et cetera. So I think everyone is looking for detail that, of course, we're not, we're not landing on, and there's other processes that need to happen to get us there. I come back to, I think this is, this is a great document. My only concern is, one of the asks that you had of us is, are we ready to bring it to the community? And I, right now, don't know what you're asking of the community, or what type, which you're going to get back that you can use. So that's my only presentation at this point. But I, I like where we're going with this.
How do you guys feel about that, Dave? It's not ready for primetime. What do we need to do to get it there?
Well, that's, I think that's your opinion. I think it's ready to present to the community. But again, to their point, what is the hope of that meeting? Is that more just a communication meeting, or is that to allow people to express their concerns? Or what's the hope of that meeting?
Yes. Yeah, it's a typical meeting, a community meeting. You know, we have to do the light work so that the community has something to react against, rather than everybody just waving their hands with nothing in front of them. You have something in front of them, they can argue, or discuss, or suggest getting tighter, getting looser, this word is wrong, you know, a B should be a C, whatever, there's a run-on sentence here and there, whatever. So that has value, and then we'll go back and probably spend one more study session reviewing that input, compare it to the input that we've got in 2016, plus all the information that we've got, and bingo, now we're ready to have a formal meeting in that room and vote on it.
I mean, if this is the, this is the top of the pyramid, and essentially what you're going to probably ask people to do is, here's the framework. Step back. You guys, a couple, I think in December, basically had the study session that said, you know, we've got to do the P E L, we've got to craft a framework that we can use to guide what's going on. So the ask is basically, what's missing from the framework that's guiding our discussions as we go forward? Help us understand, well, T O D's obviously one. Are there others that we need to incorporate in a 20,000-foot framework? We're not at 10,000 feet yet, we're still up here. We'll get there. But we need a lot more information. We need the P E L, we need some of these other studies, we need to see what's going on with Enser. So it flushes out over time, but as a, as a guidepost or a milestone step in this, this is sort of where we are today. Tell us what you think of what we've got here, and then we'll incorporate it. Next time we come back to you, it'll be more.
Yeah, I mean, this seems like a response to the community input, saying, hey, this is what we heard. Are we hearing you right? Basically, is there anything missing? That's so we can move forward. And, you know, to get back to the details into the future, you don't want to jump into the details without a response to say, you know, be proactive, we heard you, this is what we heard, this is what the key points were taking away is. And then we can get to the details with the, you know, how is that acting as a hub? And, you know, I did have the same thought with Carol did about how to get to hospital. Got to Google, just take the 401 right over there, put you there 20, two minutes later. So, I mean, it's.
We've come a long way since, we had two urban land institute studies, which talked about El Mungo Grande over there, okay?
They were the weeds.
And come a long way, and you compare that to the community meeting and input we've got there, it's, it's far, far apart. So I think we're starting to hear Littleton's answer, Littleton's experience answer to urban land institute studies.
And we need to also consider that, you know, like Peggy said, this isn't just people either coming to the station, to this area, or the people that live in this area. And that's one thing that kind of struck me, looking at the community input, which I think is important, and drives it, those people that live around there in that half-mile radius are going to be impacted the most, but they're not the only ones using it. And I did notice that if you look at the demographics between Littleton, the surrounding area, and the people at the, the people that responded, it was, there was conflict there of who actually responded and who actually lives in Littleton. Because there was age, income, it was not Littleton that responded as a whole.
Point. I've heard a couple of things. One is that, Mark, you've asked us to mark this document up with our thoughts and return it to you.
Keeping in mind that it's a framework, not a master plan.
And.
That's right.
Please, please create that.
Now they have tatties.
I do, I would, I think one of the, the way, the best ways to consider taking this back to the public is to, one of the reasons why there's over 100 responses is from the community, and it's kind of all over the place, which is always a good place to start, but not going back there. So if, we have to tighten it up, because what will start to happen is you keep asking me, I keep telling you, you keep ignoring me. So I think it needs to be tightened up. I think there needs to be, maybe look at it in terms of choices and scenarios as opposed to just open-ended. And I don't know how that works, but I think that will get us better answers. It will make, help us to get to a place in a more clear fashion. And I think that, I think it is ready for the public in terms of.
We could mark this thing up. We could mark this thing up for a year.
Well, and I agree with Mark in the beginning, you know, the public gave their, their input over a year ago, and we need to be a lot more responsive on that, and dragging these things out has done us absolutely no good. So I think that moving this trajectory, you guys are doing, you're doing more. Council, can we recently, each of us individually, get comments back to planning? What's your next meeting? What's your next meeting?
February 12.
No formal meeting coming in?
Or study session on the 12th?
I think it's February 12.
What is it?
To you by the 12th, by February 12th, or do you want them sooner?
Sooner.
Sooner. When do you want them?
One week.
One week?
Two.
You're just ready, Dave. Let me just, I just want to say, you know, my comments are, I actually think the document is, you know, in and of itself is ready for public. What I don't feel is ready is how you're conducting that input. So my comments are act, are not about the structure or things that I would change, it's more of some of the things that were outlined there that I think are very important, and, you know, let's make sure we, this is an element we take forward in the next step. So my comments are not, just if everybody's waiting for my comments, it's not going to change your document. It is more of.
It's for the future.
Right. It's more of, these are specific elements that I think are very strong, that make sense, that we should move forward with, or these are some that I, are, for me, as almost more like a citizen, would question. So my comments should not be holding up me feeling that this is ready. What I feel is, I have not gotten a good understanding of what community input looks like, and what that is going to look like, what will it look like online, what will it look like in a meeting? Are you going to set up different, different stations so people can comment on transportation? So I don't know that we're making best use of our citizens' time. And to Debbie's point, I don't want to frustrate them again. To have them come to another meeting, to ask me the same question that I told you before, that's where I'm uncomfortable. I think this is a great document.
Right, put it in writing.
Okay.
This is not a Q and A session, this is a present, you're going to be presented. Is that?
We haven't really talked about it yet, how it's going to be set up.
The format of that meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And how we solicit the feedback and how we present it.
But it's not.
You've heard of the Q and A.
Right, but it's not to go back and start the bigger conversation. It's taking this, we started with a bigger conversation, now we're here, so it's talking about it here, in that context. Right, the point is, because otherwise, it will be more.
So is it fair to then just ask for you guys to come back to us with a proposal of what your community meeting or input format is going to be? Is that?
I would rather not.
If you feel comfortable giving us direction, we can take that.
Well, I would, I would suggest that council do their markup document. If you have any that you want to, you need edits or whatever that you want to make, and get that to Jocelyn by the 30th. And then, as you guys refine what this looks like, Jocelyn, perhaps you can share that back with us at a meeting, and that way we'll have an idea of what you guys are looking at. and that way we'll have an idea of what you guys are looking at. I don't, I am not comfortable stepping in and telling you what to do or designing it for you, but I'd like to know where you're, what you're looking at, just for my, for our own knowledge, and how we can help. So, always, please.
Oh, would be most appreciated.
We are here for you.
The executive summary's not complete yet. Perhaps that might be a way to have a forward-looking kind of community summary in the document to help explain the community intent and hopefully guide some of their comments. So that might be a real, real part of the document that's missing.
Okay, trying to keep on our time, if there isn't anything else?
I do have a question, Dave. I'm not remembering seeing something about height limits.
Like Central Park.
So I'm gonna suggest something, and then you all can go ballistic. I'd like to have a height limit of three stories.
You can probably appear in this document that's down the road.
Well, I mean...
You planted the seed.
So to say, to then say, down the road, to establish height limit for the...
Hey, that would be predicated on the zoning.
Yeah, exactly, we got used by right to zoning.
Whatever it's sold out for.
Framework, framework.
That's gonna determine where we're gonna do it, whatever.
Well, I was trying to think of all the different zoning that's out there, whether that would take away somebody's... But potentially, we could suggest that what is, exists, not be changed, or you would just wait till somebody wants to bring a project and have a public hearing.
You've just jumped ahead here in half. Yeah, okay, we do have some guests that are here to present the next presentation, so if everybody feels good about where we are?
Yep.
Great, thank you, Planning Commission.
Good job.
Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for all you're doing, and all you want to be doing.
So we're on for the 15th, we don't have to vote on that or anything, we just said, let's...
We don't have any, other can give more opinions.
Bye, next Tuesday. We don't have a meeting, so...
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take, we'll make it being at 7:45, give us everybody a chance.
Thank you.
And we have biogas to renewable natural gas financing update. Mark is going to start this off, so I will hand it to Mark.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I know we had as part of the council orientation an opportunity to bring the new council down to the wastewater treatment plant. So you got a quick tour and then just a second I'm going to hand it over to John Kussman, the director of the plant here. And just quickly, there had been approval here by both city councils to put into the budget for the plant, the preliminary engineering work here for this biogas concept. And I know in the tour we had a very brief conversation, but for the existing council we had a pretty robust conversation this past year. So now we're at a decision point, and I think I'm going to turn it over to John Kussman. He's going to put a little context behind that and be a little more specific about what we require here tonight. So welcome, John. Thank you.
Sure. So now you're actually here to present information. It really is, we've received direction where the day-to-day operations in this facility are under a supervisory committee, both the city managers from each city, the public work directors. We presented to them last week basically a follow-up to this project recommending a financing approach. The supervisory committee has endorsed that approach, and we're here presenting that information. And as I always typically, the city managers on big issues like this that really sort of shape the strategic direction of the wastewater enterprise, a lot of times they'll bring that to councils to solicit any feedback relative to that recommendation. But we're here for information, to share that information. We're also here to share information on, we're rebranding our organization, and you heard a little bit about where we're potentially in the region. And that's awesome. We'd like to share that information, share our direction, and if there's any feedback you want to give Mark and Keith, then we can take that forward. So before I get going on these two information topics, I'd like to take just a quick step back and start with that term wastewater and really define what that means, or what the business of wastewater is. And I'd like to maybe pose a different adjective instead of waste, and you'll hear that different adjective later going on. But we're really in the water business, okay? There's drinking water, that's water that supports our bodies, cleanses our bodies, and supports our very livelihood. There's waters that is stored in lakes and rivers that provide resiliency in drought conditions, very similar to this winter that we're in right now, resiliency for climate change. It provides habitat for recreation, for aquatic life, and for recreation. So water means that. Water means food supply, and it means the agricultural economy for seven of the top producing agricultural communities in the state of Colorado. They're downstream of the South Platte River. So and then in terms of our business, water is used to convey waste from industries, from people's homes. It's this magical element that takes everybody's waste, moves it away from where they want it, and brings it to us for ultimately treatment. And so this, we want, now want to map that in the context of we sit in the arid west. We are essentially a desert climate here. We're not near the coast where there's this abundant supply of seawater that we can tap into. And our community is growing at record pace here. And so the demand on these precious, precious resource, this finite resource, for all those different uses that we described, makes water very, very valuable going forward. It's more than just the conduit for conveying waste to us. It needs to be reclaimed to serve our society's growth going forward. And so when that water gets conveyed to us, I'd like to talk a little bit about sort of an input-output model, what we do with that, what our business is. So we take that mismatch of waste product, and we apply human ingenuity to it, equipment, energy, and chemicals. And what we produce is water that's been renewed for new purposes. We produce an energy-rich soil amendment, and we produce clean air. Okay, and those are important, is that costs money. And for all the ratepayers that we're here representing tonight, we need to be very fiscally responsible as we're converting that water into these products on the back end. And so we need to be coming to you with very innovative projects that show a community benefit, but do it in a fiscally responsible manner. And we need to be very strategic about how we're communicating that community benefit to those stakeholders going forward. And so the two information items fit in that category there. It's a very innovative project, and then the branding that we're going to talk about a little bit later helps us to communicate where we fit in the overall ecosystem going forward. So the project we're here to talk about tonight is this biogas conversion to renewable natural gas. This is, this is one of those, as an engineer, this is one of those dream projects that you dream about. And so it allows us to improve one of those three outputs we talked about. This really allows us to improve air quality in our community and harvest the energy associated with one of our emissions in a really novel way. And it allows us to generate revenue, presents the opportunity to generate revenue as a result of that conversion. So much so that you're seeing other communities on the front range looking to do these same type of projects. City of Grand Junction did a project like this, I believe, five to 10 years ago, and has been reaping the benefits of that investment for a long time. You're hearing about the cities of Longmont, cities of Boulder, city of Colorado Springs exploring similar projects. There's a strong community push for this, and there's federal incentives that are in place that make this project very viable going forward, and we're here to share our approach for that. I want to share, we presented this last night to the city of Inglewood and got their feedback, basically also an information session, but they did have some comments that we'll incorporate going forward. Okay, this, I want to kind of characterize where we're at in the project lifecycle. We've been talking to past councils about this for well over a year. And last year, there were two really critical decisions that really set the direction of this project going forward. One, in the third quarter of last year, councils approved a design services contract, which allowed us to basically formalize the design of biogas cleaning skid and also a pipeline to connect it into Excel Energy. So that, the engineering portion of that is, has been funded by both councils. The other part of that is, on the Inglewood side, who's the administrator for the wastewater enterprise, they approved the $8 million allocation in the 2018 budget for this biogas project. So they basically allocated reserves in order to fund this project from a cash basis in 2018. So we're here not asking for approvals, but we're asking for confirmation on the recommended fin, or confirmation of the recommended financing approach. And the reason that's important is because this financing approach, it really, it determines how we ultimately deliver this project going forward. So the three financing approaches that we shared with supervisory committee were, one with the one that's already been recommended with the cities co-financing this through cash reserves. The second is, we did a pretty exhaustive evaluation of other financing instruments, from bonds to municipal lease to state-issued financing. And the one that was most favorable in that analysis was the municipal lease. And so when I present these later on, you can, we can, you can understand, that was the one that was the preferred option of those other instruments. The reason it was preferred is it allowed us to customize the term of the repayment, and we basically chose a three-year repayment to fit within, basically, the existing framework for federal credits. It allowed us to pay the project back in terms with the existing framework of federal credits. It allowed us to have the instrument in place to help mitigate risk, and that instrument is termination without penalty. Basically, the leasing agent would come in, recover the assets if the city chose to not appropriate in that, in any given year for paying back the municipal lease payments. And we'll talk a little bit more of that going forward. The third option that we looked at is a public-private partnership or a P3 agreement. And really, the advantage to this is would be a third-party private financer would come in and for, for sharing in the ultimate revenue stake here, they would, they would come up and share their experience for delivering these types of projects, but also come up with private financing to eliminate some of that initial financing risk. And so to better characterize what this P3 arrangement would look like, we went out to market. And we went out to market with a request for information, trying to assess project and market risk, trying to assess what the market was looking for in some of these partnerships, and then what they saw for terms of financing. And I'm really pleased to see, say, that there was a lot of interest in this type of, of the renewable natural gas project. We got five proposals back from Big Ox was one, Amoresco, True Star, New Phase Energy, and Renewable Natural Gas. These are, these are very established brands in the renewable natural gas industry, and they were very interested in the project. And so very briefly, I'd like to summarize, we took all five of these proprietary proposals and synthesized the information down into, this is the feedback we heard. So as far as market risk, and this ties to the viability of a renewable natural gas market and the viability of these RIN credits, which help influence the financing and the revenue streams associated with this, all five of the respondents said very strongly they believe very firmly in the renewable natural gas market, and that'll be sustained into the future. And the, and the promise of a RIN market is, is, is one of the factors that makes this project very attractive to them.
What does RIN stand for?
Identification Number. And so that's the, it's a, it's a form of credit that basically energy producers get from the federal government when they put this in their portfolio. So it's a, it's a form of transfer, and it's, it's not a very elegant name, it's Identification Number, but it's essentially a documentation of a credit.
I'll add on to that, if I may.
Sure.
Because I didn't know either, so I did some research on it. And it's, it's a credit for biogas if, if the biogas is actually used in some other, somewhere. And so if the biogas goes to market, and if it is sellable, if it has enough BTUs in, which often biogas doesn't, and if there is a market for it, then it gets sold, then we get eventually credit for that. But if there is no market for our biogas, say in five years when it becomes profitable, I think it was four years out that it would take to break even on our $8 million investment between the two cities, if there's no market at that time, then, for example, if the government is no longer pushing for petroleum producers to include an ethanol-type product in their mix for energy efficiency, if that goes away, all kinds of things could cause that to go away. Or if the whole RIN thing goes away, which it is scheduled right now, the legislation to go away in 20, in the year 2020, that's the same time that our profitability starts. If it's not renewed, then if the government environment is there to renew RINs, then we have nothing to take to market. We cannot get money for this biogas if there is not a market for RINs. So that's a huge risk.
Just one point of clarification. The RINs are written into legislation through the year 2022, and...
Yes, 2022, four years, and that's when the $8 million...
And I have some, I'd like to share, continue to share the slides. I think it addresses some of...
I just wanted to get a sense, Karina, I wanted to get a...
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yep. So like I say, the markets believes that both the RIN market is viable and then the renewable natural gas market, which extends beyond just the RIN, there's compressed natural gas, there are other outlets for biogas going forward. The respondents are looking for, at a minimum of a 10-year agreement, and the majority of the respondents we got back were on the 20-year agreement. So they're, the private industry who does this for a living, they're looking at this as a viable project beyond the terminology, the terms of the RINs. And so that's one of the things we really, one of the valuable things we got out of this request for information from the market. The other thing is, talk about project risk, is sometimes when biogas, it sounds very intimidating, right? And the conversion of biogas to renewable natural gas, that sounds really intimidating from a technology standpoint. What we heard from the market is this is very well-established technology. These are things like carbon filters and iron, iron filters, and there's compression. This is, this is technology that's been very well-established in the petroleum industry and various, various industries outside of this. And so there's a lot of, there's not technological risk here, there's not implementation, and the O&amp;M risk associated with this can be managed through experience and good specifications. And then finally, the long-term operation risk. You know, we have a, our core business is to treat water, right? And biogas is one of the outputs that we, so if our process changes because of regulations or different technologies, we want to make sure that we have flexibility that the biogas operations changes. And so what we heard from the market, and one of the reasons we went to the RFI, what length of term are they looking for? They say only one respondent said that they would, they would entertain a 10-year, and then all of the financial proposals that we saw actually were 20-year period. And so that's, this is sort of a mixed bag, I'm going to editorialize here. This is great in that they see this as a viable long-term market. They see the RNG as a really strong market tender. But from a flexibility standpoint, them wanting that longer-term agreement sort of limits our nimblity and our ability to be flexible as the market changes and as our operations changes going forward. We have a pretty good feel with what the markets look at.
John, what you're really just saying is, I mean, obviously, we would go, you know, in my mind, a 10-year was better than a 20-year, because then we basically, they, their, their commitment is paid off through renewable natural gas. You know, 20 years seems awfully long to me, but...
Yes.
Am I right, track?
Yeah, we, we asked the question, 7, 10, 15, we wanted to see what their, where their interest lied, and it lay on the longer-term scale. Our interest lies on the shorter scale, trying to get this paid off sooner so that we can incorporate it into our asset base and manage it in the terms of the rest of our asset base. Yeah. So what we did is, we took this bigger, all of that background information I just gave you, we took it and tried to synthesize it into one graphic here to highlight sort of the risk-reward balance of financing, okay? For a baseline assumption, this is what was in the Inglewood 2018 budget, which was cash financing the project. It requires about an $8 million initial outlay, and that would be $4 million from each city. That money is available within both cities sewer fund reserves, okay? Inglewood has about $6 million, and Littleton a 20?
About 25.
About $25 million. So there are cash reserves available, and again, that's the base assumption. So you're, you're financing the outlay upfront, and then the revenue is coming in from the renewable natural gas market over the 10-year period and generating approximately 12, we're estimating about $12 million of revenue at the end of the 10, at the end of a 10-year period. Okay, so that's the blue line right here. The next was that municipal lease, okay? The leasing is providing the upfront capital, and so there's no capital outlay, but we're paying back that lease in that three-year term. And that's what, that's what you're seeing is these, these are annual lease payments. And then, once that's paid back, the revenues start to kick in and, and they're at the same, we own all, we would own all those same revenue rights. So the slope is the same, but the difference is the cost of capital for the municipal lease. And that's about a $1 million difference at the end of the 10-year period is there. And then finally, this is the P3, the public-private partnership here, where again, they're fronting the capital risk, but they're wanting, because they're fronting that capital risk, they're wanting a big chunk of those profits. And the profits, they're mostly, on average, is about a 50-50 split, and there was also some capital repayment costs in there that drive the slope of this line. And what you see there is about a $9 million difference at the end of the 10-year period for them providing that capital risk and the overall risk of the project. It's a pretty substantial cost for that.
Are those numbers annual or cumulative? So would it be...
This is cumulative. This is over the 10-year period, yeah. Okay? And so when you synthesize this all together, and after we've talked to the, to both the city finance departments and the supervisory committee, this is the recommendation we're asking you to confirm today. We believe cash financing still provides the best risk value for both cities moving forward. One of the reasons is capital risk is not a major factor. Both cities have reserve balances that can fund this project. Third-party financing does mitigate the RIN risk. It is the one financial model that does provide the most mitigation for RIN risk, but it comes at a very significant cost. About 75% of the forecasted revenue over this 10-year period would be, would go to mitigating that risk. What we heard from the third-party market is this is a very viable business to get into, and the biggest way for us to mitigate RIN risk is to get to market quickly, to get this project built and constructed and have that revenue coming back before the, the fixed term of the RINs expires or is, is programmed to expire in 2022. There's a lot of speculation out there that that RIN market will still continue after 2022, but right now, it's written into legislation through 2022. And so our best RIN mitigation method is to get this built as soon as possible so that the revenue is coming in before those RINs expire in 2022. Okay? The third financing option that we looked at was this municipal lease. It does provide risk mitigation at a pretty low cost. It was about $1 million over the 10-year period. But what we heard when we talked to the cities and we talked to specifically Inglewood's financial advisor, none of them recommended that we would ever invoke the default clause of these municipal lease payments. Even though it would be tied to the sewer funds and, in theory, would be that, that default risk would be isolated to the sewer funds, all of our investors said that there, it would, it had the potential of a negative reputational risk on the city's sewer funds, and it may impact the overall bond rating of each city as well. So even though there, it appears there's an instrument of risk mitigation, what we heard from each city is they would not likely ever come to you with a recommendation to default on those payments. And so in a lot of ways, it's an illusion of, of risk mitigation. So again, cash finding, financing is our recommended approach. It gets us to the market fastest, it has the highest revenue generation for the cities. We hear that the RIN market is highly endorsed and the renewable natural gas market, natural gas from, from international, national, state level, that market is continuing to grow, and the renewable portion of that is, is, that commodity is trying to grow in those portfolios, and each of the cities has the capital reserves available.
I have a question for you, John.
Sure.
You said Inglewood has about 9 mil, and we have about 20?
Inglewood has about 6, I'm sorry if I missed it.
6 and 25. Why the big gap? What's happened over the years?
Well, each city has a responsibility to fund their enterprises independently, and so it's just a matter of different asset-based conditions, different assumptions going forward. So I can't really comment, but it's, I can tell you it's not really surprising that the cities have different reserve balances because they have different, they probably have different philosophies, philosophies for funding and managing their assets.
I would add, part of that too is that we've had some fairly large districts come online with the city of Littleton, and so we're providing sewer service to Roxboro now. And when they come online, they have to pay a TAP fee. And so there are a couple of years where we have some pretty significant TAP fees that have come in related to those districts. Now, the counter to that is that we will be billing them annually for the sewer service, and it's intended that those TAP fees are used to pay for plant, the treatment side of it.
Right, and then on the Inglewood side, they haven't had those TAP fees for the most part?
I can't speak to that. I just, I, I don't know if they've had any new districts come online on their side. I just know that we've had a couple on our side that have definitely bumped up our...
Okay, we know, yeah, we know that.
I think they do have TAP fees, but the fee that they charge may be different based on their community values and based on their, their desire to attract businesses and things like that. And so it's not uncommon for different municipalities to have different financing approaches for a shared asset like this.
So for Inglewood, though, the, the risk is higher in failure. I mean, for us, it's only about a third of our capital. For them, it's like almost 80%. What happens if their capital reserves get dangerously low? How does it affect us?
What, what, what Inglewood's advised us is that they would, this, the funding of the $4 million, their portion of it would not get them below their minimum reserve requirement. And they've done a risk assessment on the assets that they need to fund on an emergency basis, and they're comfortable, their recommendation was to, that this did not deplete their cash reserves and, 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 they were comfortable with that.
But if they were wrong, though, I'm saying, if they were wrong and their reserves are dangerously low, how does that affect Littleton?
It's a case of default from Inglewood on that. How would we move, continue to move forward with this, or what would our options be?
I misunderstood.
Yeah, well, I think from a, from a legal aspect, both end to...
Energy. Yeah. I think as far as Inglewood's reserves, I don't feel like they have an impact on Littleton
or on our rates, because we have an obligation to provide service beyond our rates, because we own 50% of the plant. I think Inglewood would be challenged with determining how they're going to make up any shortfall that potentially might be there. And I'm sure the attorney might be able to add to that.
And to sort of take that further, this really isn't so much a question of what happens to Inglewood if it doesn't have adequate reserves. The question that would come up would be if Inglewood's reserves were so insufficient it couldn't meet its portion of the financial obligations under the agreement, at which point the city would invoke its rights under the agreement, and that may mean that us and Inglewood might be on the opposite sides of the courtroom, but ultimately, that's what we would do. Now, the fact of the matter is, I think Inglewood has satisfied itself that it can do this within its level of reserves. But that would be the ultimate answer, would be that we would enforce the terms of the agreement on how we share expenses, and we would expect that Inglewood would pay its share of the expenses.
Thank you.
And just to final, I want to kind of close. So we're here giving you an update on our proposed financing approach going forward. This project will become, will go from design to construction, we're anticipating third quarter of this year. And at that time, we will be going to Inglewood's council and asking them to approve a contract with the renewable, with the RIN broker, and that gets to council member Faze. In order to capture the RINs, this has to be given, this has, the, the gas has to be transferred for transportation uses, that's what the RIN broker does. They come in, they move the, they move the particles of gas through Excel's pipeline and sell them to transportation providers. So that's a, that's a contract we will be coming back with. We need to connect to Excel Energy and have an interconnect agreement, so that agreement will be coming back to Inglewood council. And then we need to purchase this gas cleaning equipment and hire a construction contractor to build the pipeline and install that gas cleaning equipment. And so because that's in Inglewood's budget this year... And so because that's in Inglewood's budget this year, we would be going to them for approval of those contracts and that appropriation at that time. It's my understanding that Littleton has not appropriated that in the 2018 budget. But would you mind kind of commenting on the approach for, for, for Littleton going forward?
So last fall, if you recall, council, we did propose to include the $4 million in the city of Littleton's portion of the sewer fund appropriation. And council made the decision at that time to remove that from the 2018 budget. So what that means is that we would have to come back to you with an increase in the appropriation of the sewer fund in order to pay for our share of the building of the biogas project.
The two mil.
The four mil.
And it was my understanding at supervisory committee that, that staff felt that that could be done in advance of going to Inglewood's council for these final approvals.
Yes, yes. I, I think as long as we have the information that council needs to make that approval, then we can do that probably at any time.
And, and the appropriation is coming from the sewer fund only, not from our just the sewer fund?
I think would be that it comes solely from the sewer enterprise and not from any other fund.
Mayor, just to confirm for me there, John, so that the final agreements looks like in the appropriations, the third quarter of this year. So we've got all that list there. So that's when you'd be asking our council to appropriate the additional funds. Is that correct?
Yeah, or we, or sooner, yeah. No, certainly no later than this.
No later.
Certainly no later than this.
Better said.
And I think, and I'm just going to speak, I think for, Inglewood will be looking for, I think it would help Inglewood to, to approve these if they knew that Littleton had appropriated that money. So I think it would be advantageous to, to have Littleton's confirmation of cash financing and the appropriation in advance of, in advance of this.
Okay, so sooner rather than later.
So what you are asking us today is to approve appropriation and to, well, we can't approve it here, but to move it to, to approve and to, to select the financing option.
We're, we're looking for confirmation that cash financing is, is the best approach. And then Littleton staff will be coming back with a request for appropriation following this meeting. We just want to make sure we're, we're going in the right direction with this financing approach.
What does a, what does, what, what, what does it look like to you to have us give a direction on the financing tonight? We can't vote. So what does that look like?
Oh yeah, please.
I would suggest that if the council is comfortable here with this recommendation, that we place this, actually it would be an ordinance change to appropriate. So you're going to have a first reading of an ordinance instead of hearing. And the public hearing itself then would actually change, would appropriate the funds in the sewer fund. So we could do that here, you know, in the short term. This month, we could certainly start that process. So that's what it would look like. I would like Tiffany to comment a little bit about the discussion we did have with the previous council about the impact here to the sewer fund and how that affected the rates. So I think over the five year projection.
Great. So we did come to council back in August with some projections based on cash funding, partially debt funding or fully debt funding. And as it relates to the rates, by cash funding, it, it really doesn't have that big of an impact to rates. I believe we were estimating 1% in 2019, a potential one and a half in 2020, one and a half in 2021 and one and a half in 2022. And that's cash funding it and with a four year payback on the $4 million share of the project for city of Littleton. I think what it also does is it allows for us looking into the future after a year, after a five year physically constrained budget. And with these RIN credits potentially coming in, and I felt like I was very conservative on future RIN credits. I essentially dropped them by about 25% after year 2022, just to be a little more conservative. And I still feel that it's not going to impact rates as, as much as you might imagine. About maybe 0.5% if that, depending on which financing method we use. And I think the bigger issue is I feel I was conservative on revenue estimates after year four. But let's say that the RIN credits continue. All that will do is that will positively impact any future increases to rabioirs. Cause this is going to definitely offset any potential future increases. It may allow us to keep it flat. It may allow us to go up only slightly compared to where we might be going up five or seven percent in the future.
So maybe said in, in a different way is that once this project pays itself back, then there's a steady revenue stream that would come back to the sewer funds. The city would split that in essence, then reducing the, the need for us to raise rates over the future. So that's why we've been interested in this here for, you know, at least, at least a year.
Carol. Oh, so, so many tales on this thing. First on the technical aspect, I, after I retired from Honeywell, I worked for the world's largest boiler manufacturer, and Viessmann sold boilers that processed biogas. And doing the bids on those was extremely difficult because it's, it's, even though it sounds like you're just processing waste gas, it's, it's very complicated to get all of those pollutants out of there. And then what do you do with them? How do you not follow the equipment while you're doing it then? That was outside of Seattle, so it comes together there. It's, and, and the equipment was extremely expensive. And it turned out to be the hardest part of it was the people who were looking to buy the equipment didn't have the technical expertise and their existing staff to maintain the equipment. So I'm not comfortable that that's been addressed. It's just kind of put up there. But we might have to hire additional people with very high technical expertise. Another, I'm just throwing that out as another unknown.
If I may comment on that, I, I just came from, we just commissioned a wastewater facility in Brighton, a 24 million gallon a day facility that had gas conditioning prior to cogeneration. Same technology, exact same systems. We operated that facility very successfully with the staff we had, very minimal training. These are, these, I do not doubt your experience. There are gas conditionings and cleaning systems that get very elaborate. But for biogas applications tied to wastewater, this is a very robust technology and is actually very operator friendly. We, we don't have those, we don't share those same concerns.
How, how long ago since you were in that field? Two years ago, so maybe technicals moving that fast.
Not all gas streams are the same. And I, and I think that's a really important distinction. And so there are gas streams off of industries and that, that I do believe are very complicated and require a bevy of different technology approaches. But I can tell you a very personal experience with a digester gas cleaning equipment. It's very much within the wheelhouse of wastewater operators' expertise.
Completely different tale on this thing. So far as I know, this has never been approved by council. That it was taken forward by the supervisory committee. Mr. City Manager.
I don't know if I characterized that. The council's approved placing it in the wastewater treatments and budget to do the, this phase of the engineering. But as somebody explained there, we did not appropriate the funds to go beyond that. That's, that's what.
So then that preliminary engineering work was approved.
It was.
By, by council. And then I, I kind of had the idea that after that, there was, that council had requested back in September for a report to come probably from Inglewood of looking into private providers. And so to get other ways to do it than this. And has that happened?
This is the intent, this is the presentation response to that request.
Okay, and it was found that this is the best way? I didn't see any numbers on the private.
Those numbers are summarized in.
That, that bracket.
Yeah, this, this, this is what third party financing brings to the table. It brings, you don't have to bring the capital forward. It does provide RIN risk. It shifts the RIN risk, the, the market risk to that third party provider. But it comes at a cost of about 75% of your forecasted revenue.
So the decision was to go with cash?
We're, that's what we recommended to supervisory committee. Supervisory committee has endorsed that. And the city of Inglewood also has, is moving forward with that decision as well. Or, or subject to a final appropriation in third quarter.
And then included in that is what the cash does not earn when it's pulled out. I assume it's invested in earning now.
Yes, we reduce the future investment earnings because we wouldn't have the 4 million.
It said nine million, didn't it? Was it nine million that you reduced?
For the, well.
The return was for nine mil.
At the scene of the 4 million that we wouldn't have on hand to earn interest on.
Right.
So that's included?
Yes.
That was the adjustment.
Thing that bothers me most about this is generally, we're not supposed to use taxpayer money in risky investments. And even though I hear assurances all around, hurry up and buy it before it goes away, that, that it's a big unknown what happens in the RIN market. RINs are intangibles and they could go oof very quickly, very quickly. We don't have any insurance, again, that they even exist until, thank you for the correction, 2022. It could be completely gone and our money could be completely gone. I think it's.
Well, in that case, you.
You're interrupting me.
Go for it.
Ask her for your turn. Go ahead. Oh, okay. You don't want to wait?
No, go ahead.
Exchange.
I lost my train of thought completely. Go ahead, go nuts.
Risk, no, I was going to just say on the risk piece, that's when you'd say then let's let the risk investors take that risk away from us. You know, so that's an alternative. When, when was this RFP done? Or was, was it an RFP to come up with a budget?
RFP.
It was a request for information to characterize the private, the P three market. And so we did it in a two step process. So it was a request for information first. And if the information looked, if some of the terms were shorter and some of the financials looked better, we could have then converted that into a request for proposals at that point. And actually, we would have gone to the second step and actually gone back out to market. And we're not recommending doing that. But we did the first step, which is the request.
So the eight million, is that a fix, just a fixed number that's good for now until whenever?
That's based on the preliminary design phase is that's the number that, that, that we're currently estimating. This contract that, that both cities have approved for final design, that will refine that number. We will actually go out to bid. We will actually get quotes for all the equipment. And we hope to refine that number so that it's, it's much, that will be part of that subsequent presentation.
And finally, is it, is it, you're feeling that that gas will be 100% viable?
Yeah, I, I'm going to state my, my professional opinion is getting into the renewable natural gas market, which this project allows the wastewater enterprise to do, will be a very good investment for both cities. We may not, the RIN market is variable, okay? And it's, it's written into legislation through 2022. It's going to take an act, an administrative act of legislator to take it out. And so I don't think it disappears like that. That's, that's, that's a lengthy process. This current administration has some time under their belt if they were going to tackle this. Our industry sources are saying they would have tackled this already. So we feel the RIN market is viable to pay this project off in the, in the current timeframe of the RIN market. If we pay this asset off, it opens the door to renewable natural gas in a lot of different ways. Compressed natural gas is, is a very viable market. And that's what you're seeing a lot on the front range. It wasn't viable for us right now because neither city has a, has a CNG fleet at this point. And our nearest existing fleet was several miles downstream. But that market will, we're, we're confident that market's going to evolve. And there, we think there will be other opportunities as, as this project progresses. And this investment in this asset will, will, will produce dividends.
Will we have a, the RIN broker, will that broker be able to give us some idea, you know, some projections, I guess, in, in your next report?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And that's, and that's part of getting them on board.
Right, right.
Marina?
Tiffany, I have some questions on the revenue assumptions. What, um, what are, so I've heard it's a net revenue number, meaning you've already accounted for the that we're not accruing on the $4 million in cash. But if you can just educate me a little bit of what is in that revenue number? How does the RIN credits play into that? And then second, if we were to, how can we mitigate the risk? So if the private investor is coming in so much lower, there is some assumption there of, you know, how, how they're kind of balancing that risk. Should we have a scenario that, you know, that gives us kind of a range of if the RINs go away, here's where we'll be. And we're just to get a sense of how much risk are we really exposing ourselves to?
Can I comment on that last one first? Sorry. The, this assumes the same RIN market. Their, this, their line is a different slope because of their revenue, their take of the revenue and their take of the upfront financing. And so the, the difference in these lines is not a different assessment of the RIN market. It's an assessment of the, of the revenue sharing. So I wanted to just, I wanted to clarify that before you, before you answer your question.
Thank you.
I think as far as the RIN credits, like I said previously, I, I feel like I've been conservative because I dropped it off in about year 2026, assuming that, let's say the RIN credits do go away. And I think I did, I think it was a total of about, it, it comes to about a million dollars a year. That, thus the four years that it takes to recoup that. And then I reduced it to about 750 and then about 500 and then about 250 in the years.
So the portion of RIN credits to the total revenue numbers goes down over time?
Right, that's how I've projected it. Now if the RIN credits continue and.
And what's the percentage right now? Is it 20% is the credit, 80% is the?
Well, it's about a million dollars of about 16 million total. So I can't do that math in my head. It's small, but not a significant percent.
Carol.
Is Excel our intended market?
Excel is a distributor. And so we hire the RIN broker to actually, to distribute to the market. And what we've, we've gotten a lot of interest, we've got a lot of calls from RIN brokers saying that there are, the, the market to receive this from Excel's distribution network is very strong. And so we, we, we don't have any concerns about tapping into the RIN market. The other thing I'd like to add is, so as part of the federal program through 2022, they, the, the federal government set goals. And they set a total target of the market that they wanted to move these oil producers to renewable sources. They're, they are not meeting that target. And so that's, that's part of the reason the industry is so bullish on the RINs is these federal mandates or federal targets. Demand so far has been below that. And so the, the market is still, it's not like we're approaching the end of that market. And there's, there's, there's a lot of hope that that market will stay viable until that demand is fully met.
John, you might explain the, what is actually in the RIN market? So I know we've been talking about biogas specifically, but the RIN market is far broader than that.
Yeah.
So when we talk about federal legislation, it's, it's just a much bigger issue.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask our consultant who's been helping this, a rural engineer, to answer that more. I can tell, I've been, I've been got my blinders on. We're, we're the cellulosic part of the market, but there's four different markets in the RINs. And cellulosic is what's derived, wastewater production of biogas is in that cellulosic market.
Yeah, and I don't even know offhand with the other two, but I know ethanol is a big one. So ethanol is huge and that's one most investments are going to right now. CNG, yeah.
There's not enough ethanol, so that opens up the room or?
Well, there, there is excess capacity in the ethanol. Well, there's five different categories. So we're looking at, I believe it's D three is the, the.
Category.
Category, yes. And so ethanol, I think is D one. I'm not 100% positive on that. I have to pull up the report. I have to pull up the report. Shit, I might be. I have it here. But, so ethanol has capacity, but the cellulosic, D3, has a lot of excess capacity because there's not as much biogas being generated. So landfills is one category that you're recouping natural gas or biogas from that is being converted into RINs credits also. So that is the most common right now is landfill gas. Digestor gas is relatively new in the market.
But there's targets in each of those categories, and the target in the category, there's still quite a bit of demand in our target category, so.
So the gases that you're hoping to recover, they're just going at the air now?
We're burning them right now.
They're just going away, we're making zero dollars?
Yep.
So, yeah, probably not good pollution, I presume, too. I mean, not all pollution's banking pollution, I presume, this is not good. So, so this goes into the other fuels that, that really we get our power from, the fuels that make these battery cars and things.
Right, sure.
Right, so this is the fuel that is most dependable. So this is just a portion, what percentage of that would that be? The biofuels that we're adding to the...
Different question.
I fill up my car with a tank of gas and it has this...
At a national level, I would say, I can't quote you a number, but I'm gonna give you, it's the renewable portion of what you're getting is a very small percentage. The federal government is trying, because it's a sustainable investment, where they're trying to stimulate markets as well, they're trying to grow that percentage, and so, don't quote me on these numbers. So if it's five percent now, they're trying to like grow it to like ten percent, and that's the whole, that's the whole...
The idea that it would grow, though, that's, I mean, that's what we're hoping for.
They're hoping to grow.
Because I don't think the magic bullet's gonna be invented within the next ten years. So, okay, cool, thank you.
And there's a lot of supply untapped, you know, landfills, I mean, online, just.
Who do we sell this to?
We, that's, we don't know that yet. That's where hiring the RIN broker to actually distribute it, but it's typically petroleum companies, and so, who, some of the people we've been talking to...
Let me rephrase that. So you are selling the gas to Excel Energy. They are then going to push the gas theoretically to other places in...
You mean as a transporter?
Yes, as a transporter.
Yes.
And the gas companies that are producing petroleum get credits for buying your gas that's transferred into the Excel pipeline. So that's really how it works. There's no governmental funding for this program, it's a credit that each petroleum manufacturer has to have seven to ten percent of renewable gas in their portfolio.
It's already gone up two percent, John.
Well, I don't know what the number is, but I'm just using it.
Watch the clock, go go.
That make sense?
So it's a different market, the RIN and the gas are separate. It's the credit market, it's more, it's kind of akin to affordable housing credits.
Right.
The credits are different than the actual stock or gas, so.
So Excel's very excited to do this. They've had a lot of interest, and Eric Cluck, it's, sorry, City of Inglewood, City Inglewood's manager, talk to me.
Eric Cack.
Cack, sorry. Talked to the city. Talked to Excel earlier this week, and they said they're very excited about moving forward this project.
And who would be our competition? Who are we competing against? Do we have any competition?
Well, you're competing, there's a set, there's a set supply or a set target volume for the, these biogas credits, so we're competing for others who have this as a supply, them getting to the market. It's, it's not, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a traditional competing...
In a sense, ethanol is a competitor. If there's enough ethanol, which there isn't right now, but if there were, then we would need biogas to fulfill the requirement.
Yeah, but...
He's nodding, yes.
Yeah, but not where we're at right now.
Around eight percent, too.
I think, my opinion is, the market for renewables is so large right now that that, yes, that is a, that is a potential concept, but that's, that's, that's not in our lifetime's idea.
I think, you know, cleaning the air, increasing revenue, getting revenue from our waste, basically, it's no brainer to me, and the question is financing. The fact that we have the money, yes, there is a risk, but there's a risk in everything that we do every day. I mean, there's a risk in widening a road or a sidewalk or buying a snowplow, you know? So I think the returns far outweigh that risk, and I don't necessarily see that risk as that huge of a risk that we are, you know, this is a very risky investment, we'll roll the dice and hope that it happens, it's a pretty good bet. So I think I'm fine with the cash finance, and I think we're not gonna harm our reserves doing that, and I think we'll move on with that.
Let's go around the room, yeah?
Yes, I think it'd be a great...
Marina?
Yeah, I mean, when I look at if we are going to be spending money, let's spend it towards an investment, that's what I see this at. So, I think it's a valid proposal.
Carol? I'm very uncomfortable with this not voting, voting, and with the fact that this is the, I think, the first time that council has voted on this sort of thing.
We're not voting.
I know we're not voting, but it sure feels like we're...
And we're making a decision to direct staff.
Yeah, I understand, I'm saying I'm very uncomfortable with it, and so I'd say no, because I'm very uncomfortable with the process.
I'm a non-tree hugger, that's for sure. I'm for it, let's do it.
Okay, so council has, you have consensus from council to prepare an ordinance.
Okay. What do we get, six, one? Is that my little Peggy's voice over there? You don't have it?
Yeah, Peggy gave...
I can't tell you, I'm talking to the mic anymore, you know?
Okay, Debbie, just to address what, you know, Carol and the process, so what we're just asking here is that it gets on the agenda for an ordinance, so we're going to go through a formal diligence and process and make a decision at that point.
It'll be a first and second reading, so there'll be a public hearing. We have, there, you, you know, in order to get things to the dais, there needs to be a consensus from council, there needs to be four people that are, want to move it, otherwise, nothing moves or everything moves. So, you have, you wanna, you really wanna talk about the logo? All right.
It should be quick, but I don't have the presentation, it's on a different...
We have it in front of us.
Okay, so just very quickly, we are not, the wastewater name, the wastewater brand has served us well for forty years. We're transitioning to, there are more competing demands on the water that we produce, that's gonna force us to look regionally and partner regionally and plan regionally, and so, and we need to think, we need to get this waste mentality out of our vernacular. We are actually renewing water for our community's needs. And along the way, like the biogas project, we're recovering and trying to market the resources that we're treating along those processes. And so we're looking at rebranding, which includes mission visions and values, but it gets sort of culminated in a logo and a name. And we're choosing the South Platte, we're recommending the South Platte Water Renewal Partners. Partners, the original partnership between Littleton and Inglewood, we're also looking to partner in the South Platte Basin in the region. Water renewal, I think I've explained that one very well. South Platte Basin, yes, we serve the cities of Littleton, Inglewood, and we're super proud of that, but we also serve nineteen other connector districts, and we also serve all of the communities that are, that are built around the South Platte watershed. I think this is just an acknowledgement of the work that each of these cities have done for the past forty years, and the work they're gonna keep doing going forward in serving the South Platte watershed, not just, not, and the cities are included in that broader watershed. So that's the, that's the brand that we're recommending going forward.
And I would just ask, for some clarification, this is, this is not a policy decision, you are just sharing this with us as courtesy.
We're sharing this information, yep.
But, you know, we are policymakers, so this is not something that we can tell you, I don't like this shade of green, but it doesn't matter.
Actually, one more question. How did, did Inglewood have many concerns? Are you able to share that, or?
I am. I think the biggest concern, the biggest feedback we got last night is around the tagline. The tagline says that it's serving Littleton.
Well, not this.
It's all, it's more, no, no, that...
A little backwards.
Yeah, no, oh, the biogas?
Yeah, I like this one.
Well, let me finish that thought. They had some concerns about the tagline, serving Littleton, Inglewood, and beyond. They wanted to express more ownership, like powered by Littleton, Inglewood, or a Littleton-Inglewood joint venture. That feedback went to the city manager of Inglewood, he's gonna bring that back to the supervisory committee, so I do think there might be a subtle tweak to the tagline.
Would we support?
I had the same reaction, so it was interesting that day. I feel like we're just like everybody else.
I hear, yep.
So, and we have much more ownership of this, and we should claim it.
Yep, I think that's...
We're the risk, we're the risk holders.
I think that subtle change would do that. As far as on the biogas project, we did get some feedback that there was some desire for the P3 because it is a full risk transfer, but we're moving forward, going to present a cash finance project to Inglewood later this year. So that was the, that was the overall direction.
Great, do you do anything else for us?
No, I really appreciate all the feedback and your time.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, council, our next item is lift recommendations, and if everybody's okay, we'll just go ahead, write on in, unless we need to break.
Nope.
Okay. So you all received the applications that Jerry and I had received regarding the applicants, and I wanna go through just real briefly with you. I'm gonna pass around, let me see, questions that were asked, and so you have those, just pass those down. And then I have a document here that I'm going to share with you, but I want to walk through it real briefly, and you guys will cut to the last. Jerry and I wanted to share with you a little bit about our process and a little bit about kind of what we, what we were thinking. Our interviews were conducted in a public setting, as we promised and made an amendment to. We conducted the interviews January eighteenth and nineteenth, and all the candidates were asked the same questions and given the same information. We had two citizens observe the interviews both days. Then we met on January twentieth, Jerry and I met on January twentieth to deliberate and reach our recommendations. Our decisions were based primarily on the criteria that I've listed here, and while the criteria is somewhat subjective, it served to guide our decisions in a thoughtful way that allowed us to reach full consensus on our final choices. Recognizing that there are nuances in interviews that can influence decisions, we believed those influences were not used in determining our recommendations. We appreciate the opportunity to present these candidates to the entire council, and we look forward to answering any questions. Please note that we ask that the discussion denied focus on our recommendations. We are happy to engage in a conversation about the reasons these citizens were selected, but we prefer not to embark on a discussion on why others were not. Out of respect for our citizens, we will keep this conversation positive and supportive. Criteria, primary criteria that we used, one, some understanding of land use, zoning, and comp plan, and how they work together. Some experience or knowledge of the primary components of redevelopment and urban renewal. An understanding of financing mechanisms, it was not necessary, but it was a plus. We wanted someone, obviously, who was gonna be a team player, these folks are gonna have to work together. We wanted someone who was interested in the success of urban renewal, good communicator, and someone, obviously, who was gonna be available for the meetings and understand that the workload may increase. Please note that all of the candidates indicated a strong love of Littleton and a desire to give back in service to their community. So that was across the board. I would also say that Jerry and I, again, you know, for those of us that have gone through board and commission interviews, were always just so kind of taken back by the high, high level of skills and the quality that we have in Littleton, and we began to experience that. It was, we probably could have picked any one of them, and it's just, we were very, we always are, we're like, wow, these people. So no doubt, we have some great talent on the table, and for those that weren't appointed, we will encourage their applications to any of our other boards and commissions. We felt a couple of the candidates would be excellent on any one of our cross judicial boards, and we would look forward to seeing them again in February, and a couple of them did comment that they had, had some ideas on some other boards, too. So I will go ahead and pass, this is essentially what I just read to you, but I wanted to say it aloud for the record also. Our new appointees that we're recommending are Jack Lajacki for a term ending 2021, Cindy Christensen with a term ending 2020, and Joseph Arena with a term ending 2020. We're also recommending that we reappoint Kevin Saylor for a term ending 2023, and Nicholas Millar for a term ending 2023. They were both, they've both served on the lift board a year, and their term expired in 2018, so they resigned early so that we could fill those positions. And Jerry and I felt as though these guys, both of them were, they're very committed to continuing to work on the, on the lift board. They, they have spent the year kind of going through the processes and kind of the housekeeping of it, because there hasn't been a project, and now that there's a project in the potential in the future, they are hoping to see their, their work come to fruition. I think that one of the things that they both indicated was how much they would like to continue learning, and in terms of more experiences on the lift board to help bring them up to a state of knowledge regarding urban renewal. So it was, Jerry and I both felt that these guys had put in some time and had done some work, and that they wanted to come back, and they wanted to do more, and they wanted five years, because that's what these terms are, and we are appreciative of that, appreciative of their service, and so we would like to help them. So we will, Jerry, do you wanna add some of your thoughts?
I do, I wanna add that we're unanimous. There was really little discussion on who to appoint.
Was that one fight?
Yeah, but...
There wasn't, it was...
Right, yeah. But, yeah, we're unanimous on all five. There was the other candidate not appointed, where that's what we talked about, what the heck do we do with those folks? Because there were so many talented folks, so, yeah, and I think these, the three new, I think are all experienced, or really contribute.
Jack brings an incredible amount of finance, and his experience in banking and stuff we thought was great. Cindy brings a great, adult knowledge on development, urban renewal, economic development. And Joseph, he has, he's an attorney who has a interesting background, but he also has a great passion for public service, and he also has, I thought, a nice understanding of where we are in development, and he has, grew up in Littleton, and went away and did college and stuff, and then came back and has moved here with his wife and has his family here, so. Any comments or questions?
I like the variety of each of the, at least the new members that you chose. You have finance, you have kind of urban planning to a certain degree, and then some legal, so I think it's, because that's one of the challenges with Lift, there's so many aspects of the decisions that are being made, and different strengths and skill sets come in throughout its full lifecycle, so I like that.
Having another legal bagel in the room is not always my favorite thing.
Okay, so if there's no additional discussion, then we will have staff bring this back to us at our next meeting.
Will you have it? Have these candidates been notified?
No.
No, they were not. No, they will not until we vote next week.
How about if there is a change in somebody's circumstance? Do we, do you have a second or a sixth and seventh choice?
We'd often do an alternates, but it's just not allowed. We had a couple candidates sometime.
Yeah, that, you're not too concerned. Will you bring that back if somebody has to decline on speculative point?
Yeah, I don't think that we would have to re, I don't think that we would need to open it up for applications again. We have seven...
All my, all my folks.
Yeah, these five of those are incredibly... No.
If someone could simply submit another name, if they, for some reason, less than a crime.
What was that again?
The mayor could simply go ahead under the statute and say, for example, one of these people declined, the mayor could simply submit another name to fill in that place.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are now at your little corner, and you get four minutes.
I'm just glad to be back.
We are glad you are back.
Just a couple of quick comments here, so I think we're trying to give council a little bit of a heads up here. If we have an item coming to your next regular meeting here, we've got a couple of vacation equestrian easements that are a little unusual, that you'll see on the agenda, and hopefully the detail of that will explain all this, but we've had requests from the property owners for us to release those easements. So as you look at that, again, they're really unique. If you have questions, please just let me know.
And on, Mark, just that this is being brought forward by those property owners?
Correct. The other thing I wanted to mention is that one of the, one of the challenges, I think, that I have been looking at here internal to our operation is our development review process. And so I've had several conversations with Keith Reister, our Public Works Director, and Jocelyn Mills, our Community Development Director. And so we actually have a consultant that I'd like to bring on and actually do this kind of analysis within the development review process, so Public Works, Community Development, and to kind of map our processes and then look for best management practices to kind of fine tune that. I think what I'm hearing is that a real concern, not only from the development community, but the lack of predictability about our process, and so I want to address that, quite honestly, from our residents as well. They have a difficult time understanding our own process. And so I think it's quite honestly, I believe that it's critical for us to make this assessment to move this forward. We do not have the expertise or the time or the resource internal for us to do the work. Now, I have funds appropriated within professional services between the two departments, so I don't necessarily need an appropriation for that. I mean, it's about probably less than $60,000. So I have the authority within our policies for me to just to go ahead and do this work, but I wanted to at least notify you that we're gonna be proceeding with this.
This is FYI, you could go out and do it without us.
I can, I can do that. But I have to be honest, this, this is, in my opinion, is probably one of the most critical things that we could do internally to this organization, because our reputation, both by the development community and our own citizens, I think we're a little bit at risk here, and I'm gonna address that. The last thing is, you know, we, we did put in place kind of this new emergency notification process.
It works. Spread alert, spread alert.
I'm sorry.
My work was delayed two hours, but it wasn't. Like, damn.
It's a new system, and so we did wanna test it, and we, you know, with this recent snow, we did have a delayed start here, and I didn't realize that some of council was tied to that, so I apologize if you got a very early morning phone call and text message. You are to get an email, by the way, but not, not the early morning phone call.
I didn't get a phone call or a text, I just got the email.
It didn't ring, I just got the message.
Okay.
I got it.
All right, well...
Work for me.
You know, who's the important guy on the list now, apparently?
There's not so much notification in case we have a kind of, you know, difficult road conditions, but we are looking longer term here to try to implement kind of a emergency management policies throughout the organization so we can respond to, you know, kind of the emergencies here, whether they're natural disasters or like train derailments or other kinds of emergency. So we're trying to put a deeper process in place here. And so this was one step, and we had a trial with that, and for the most part it went great, so I apologize if you got that. It staffed everybody, not everybody got it, so that was part of the test. So we did have a few employees who did not get notified for one reason or another, so that's why we wanted to play that out.
That's because they came to us instead.
Yes, so we're working on those parts. Most part was pretty good.
Yeah, good.
So that's the same vibe.
Apart from... Just two housekeeping things. Thursday, we have our breakfast with South Suburban. It is here. Would you make sure council gets that agenda?
Absolutely, I will, here, first thing tomorrow morning.
Thanks. And then we are, we will have a workshop agenda for you next week, meeting with Kevin this week. Which, I guess, it's almost noon now. And so we're gonna put the, put that all back, all together, and so we'll have that for you guys. It will be, it will be small, but it will be large. It will be, it will be few issues, but they are very, very big.
How many hours is that?
We are, at this time, starting the workshop at 8:00, and we would like to be concluded by 3:30. So we will have, there will be some level of breakfast there, so grab it and we, and then there will be lunch served, and we will make, probably make it a working lunch. And it's at the Falls. So be comfortable, dress comfortable. Okay, Karina?
I will make it super quick. So Dr. Cog has made a few, we've made a few decisions there, and then there's also some information I'm gonna just pass along. There is a winter, this is the first year, it's a winter bike to work, so I don't know if this is information that we also try to share through the city of Littleton and make it available or...
We have in the past, yes.
So I'm making you aware if this is something to share with Kelly to help distribute that information. There has also been a data request, and I don't know if, Keith, you might have gotten this, so this is, as you know, Dr. Cog does a really great job on setting goals and tracking data, et cetera, so they need our help and everybody's help to do that. And then there was a, one of the decisions that was an important change in how Dr. Cog is managing the funding, that's federal funding that's coming in, and then what projects it goes to. It was up until now centrally managed with the, within Dr. Cog. And the decision that was made was that that was going to be pushed down at a more sub-regional level, and that decision was taken to a vote this past week. Generally speaking, it's an 80/20 split, which means 20% stays at the high-level regional, 80% is coming down at the sub-regional. Some of the advantages that we have from that is sub-regional is organized by counties, and lucky us, in this case, we're in three counties. Sometimes that works to our advantage, maybe sometimes to our disadvantage, so in this case, that just gives us, you know, we, we have a seat at the table in various discussions, and it allows a lot more collaboration in the areas that affects more than one jurisdiction. So, good news, more to come from the Arapahoe Transportation Forum, which is the entity that's been put together to help manage this process and this funding. Feel free to reach out to me if you wanna learn more about this, you know, share this lovely packet.
And if I may, I just wanna reinforce that, you know, the new model that Dr. Cog adopted is the one they patterned after the Seattle or Puget Sound Regional Council of Governments. And I, of course, worked that for eight years. Quite honestly, I am thrilled with this decision. I think it has much more meaning for Littleton to participate on an annual basis for grant opportunities, and so I, I'm just thrilled.
Then we are too.
Yes, excellent, good.
Your turn.
Thank you.